James Holly.
Here.
Ben Meeks.
Here.
Alan Casper.
Here.
Ward Roland.
Here.
Tim Casell.
Here.
Brian Shields.
Here.
Coleman Mayhew.
Here.
Kermit King.
Here.
Steve Stallings.
Here.
John Brown.
Here.
Bert Sellers.
Here.
Vic Ingram.
Here.
All right, thank you. Let's uh, we're gonna have a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, living and death.
All right, thank y'all. So it brings us down to item five. Any additions or revisions to the agenda? Any additions or agenda items need to be added? All right, I'd like to add two, two items, please. Um, and this will kind of coat tail off of the fire and rescue reports, but I believe they need to be actual items. Um, so it'd be F and G. So F will have the contingency money. Um, that was the ninety-eight thousand dollars we discussed last month and how to break that up over the agencies. So a discussion on that would be item F, and then item G. I'd like to add a discussion on uh, the drug box possible changes. We're gonna have a presentation later tonight on that, and I think it'll be important for this body to have a discussion on that. And Director, do we need to have a motion to amend the agenda first? Okay, all right. So can I get a, entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add those items?
I'll move it in a second.
All right, Alan Casper made the motion, second by Kermit King. All right, so got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, we want to take a roll call vote?
James Holly.
Yes.
Ben Meeks.
Yes.
Ward Roland.
Yes.
Tim Casell.
Yes.
Brian Shields.
Yes.
Coleman Mayhew.
Yes.
Steve Stallings.
Yes.
John Brown.
Yes.
Bert Sellers.
Yes.
Vic Ingram.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries unanimous. Thank you, guys. All right, so now we'll need to... Apologize. Want to stay?
No, I, I'm gonna vote, but they just didn't tell my name.
Oh, I got you.
Yes.
Yeah, that carries as you vote. Got you, yeah. All right, thank you, gentlemen. That's right. All right, so we're gonna move to now entertain a motion for, uh, to approve the agenda for tonight.
So move.
All right. Who was that? Okay.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. On the floor, any discussion on emotion? All right, roll call vote, please.
James Holly.
Approved.
Ben Meeks.
Yes.
Alan Casper.
Yes.
Ward Roland.
Yes.
Tim Casell.
Yes.
Brian Shields.
Yes.
Coleman Mayhew.
Yes.
Kermit King.
Yes.
Steve Stallings.
Yes.
John Brown.
Yes.
Bert Sellers.
Yes.
Vic Ingram.
Yes.
All right. All right, gentlemen, you should have a packet in front of you. Uh, this is gonna break us down to minutes approval, so please take a few minutes and review those minutes, and then we'll entertain a motion. All right, gentlemen, um, if you've had time, we will entertain a motion if everybody agrees with the minutes from last month to approve the minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Sir.
I'll second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on emotion? If not, roll call vote?
James Holly.
Yes.
Ben Meeks.
Yes.
Alan Casper.
Yes.
Ward Roland.
Yes.
Tim Casell.
Yes.
Brian Shields.
Yes.
Coleman Mayhew.
Yes.
Kermit King.
Yes.
Steve Stallings.
Yes.
John Brown.
Yes.
Bert Sellers.
Yes.
Vic Ingram.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we're down to presentations. Um, I believe we're gonna have one, but he's not here at the moment, so we will come back to that. So we're gonna skip item eight and move to nine, which will be here in other citizens. Do you have any citizens signed up tonight? Okay, thank you, Director. No citizens. That brings us down to item ten, Fire and Rescue Association reports. Chief Fowler.
Chairman, if I could, I'll defer my time to a couple of the items that we've got to talk about and, and reports that I need to give from Fire and Rescue.
Okay, all right. We'll defer the time to those items below. Thank you, sir. All right, brings us down to item eleven, County Staff Reports. Director Key.
Talked about a few of the budgetary items, just to let everybody know. Uh, the Board of Supervisors, everything has gone to the Finance Committee. Uh, the Finance Committee meets in June, so we'll probably have more discussion on that next month. A reminder to all the county fire departments of the Virginia Department of Fire Program's ATL funding, that's um, eleven thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and some change. Um, we've only got a little bit of that paperwork turned in. That has to be spent, and it's reimbursable, all on fire paraphernalia as far as turnout gear, fire vehicles, whatnot. Um, that's to be sent in by the end of June, unless you, your department chooses to roll it over. Uh, also a reminder of the funding for the For For Life, that's Virginia For For Life funding. Uh, it's a little bit over five thousand dollars. I think we've only got one agency that still hasn't turned in the paperwork for that, uh, to finish that up. But that does start back over in July and August, so you will be receiving notice that that funding's coming back around also. Uh, we'll discuss the drug box a little bit later on, and my last thing is I wanted to congratulate Fire Marshal Scott Hutcherson. He graduated from the Law Enforcement Academy last Friday. Uh, that was ten weeks he was gone, and he spent over four hundred hours in class. So a lot of great learning and training went on for him, so just congratulate him. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. Um, just to add to that, guys, to the fire departments, make sure you draw down your money. That's money there to be used for the fire equipment. Uh, when do they need to let, do they need to let you know if they're gonna roll it over? What's the deadline?
It's usually the end of June, June thirtieth. They need to let me know if they want to roll it over to next year. Uh, we usually require that, if they're gonna do that, to be spent on apparatus.
Okay. All right, good deal. Um, and yes, we do appreciate Scott. I know it's a, uh, that was an endeavor to take on and a sacrifice to be gone that long, so we congratulate him and appreciate him. All right, so any other unfinished business items before we go to new business? All right, here none, we're gonna move to new business. So item A is gonna be adoption of the twenty-twenty-two Fire Rescue Commission bylaws. Director Key.
All right, because of the new makeup of the Fire Rescue Commission, a new set of bylaws must be adopted. A draft set of bylaws was handed out in March at the Fire Rescue Com- uh, Commission meeting, and additional discussions took place at the April twenty-two meeting. Uh, one change was made. Since the March meeting, section four point one, no member of the commission shall be an employer of Pennsylvania County. Uh, most of these bylaws being recommended mirror the Board of Supervisors' bylaws to have its consistency. So they have been noted and in our in the agenda packet for review.
All right, gentlemen, take a few minutes to review those uh, bylaws and changes, and we'll entertain some discussion and a motion. All right, any discussion, gentlemen, on the proposed bylaws? I think we've been doing this now, this is our third month, we've kind of kicked this document around, so I feel like we've hammered it down pretty good. Um, here is no discussion, I'll entertain a motion if somebody so pleases to accept these bylaws.
I'll sort of make a motion, accept the bylaws.
Okay.
Second.
Motion on the floor and a second to accepted bylaws. Any discussion on emotion? All right, here none, roll call vote.
James Holly.
Yes.
Ben Meeks.
Yes.
Alan Casper.
Yes.
Ward Roland.
Yes.
Tim Casell.
Yes.
Brian Shields.
Yes.
Coleman Mayhew.
Yes.
Kermit King.
Yes.
Steve Stallings.
Yes.
John Brown.
Yes.
Bert Sellers.
Yes.
Vic Ingram.
Yes.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. That passes unanimous. All right, that brings us down to new business, item B, Board of Supervisors Communications. Mr. Vic Ingram, Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir. I don't really have a whole lot to add, except to express our gratitude on behalf of the Board of Supervisors for you guys being willing to serve and for your dedication, your prices. Don't know what we would do without you. In regards to funding, we continually trying to help you as much as possible. Uh, you know, there's not been so much money to go around. I did want to address the contingency fund. There's a little misunderstanding about that. Uh, and I don't want to call it a rainy day fund, but it's, it's money that we have set aside, you know, for unseen items, things that arise, you know, through the um, course of a year that's not appropriated in the budget. So it's not just a free pot of money that we can start grabbing from. But uh, a- again, our commitment is to, to fund you guys and your departments as much as reasonably possible. And uh, again, I think that's it. Thank you for what you do.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Vic Ingram, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. All right, we're going down to item C, new business, Fire and Rescue, uh, fiscal year twenty-three, Fire and Rescue Service Agreement. Uh, this will be Chris Slim.
Thank you, sir. Uh, good to see everybody. I just tied up a few loose ends from my time as the Director, and this was one of them. I told Chris I would finish up for him, and uh, they had, uh, this was on the agenda last week at the Board of Supervisors for the uh, service agreement. They looked at it and they sent it back with uh, wanting two changes, and I'll do the second one first. If you look at um, the items owned, um, let's see, B six, uh, or on page three of six. And that is item B. Um, so as you know, we give every agency, uh, they get three allotments a year, one in Ja- one in August, one in January, and they get the last one in June if they meet their seventy percent call volume. What we've been doing and what we've been allowing is we have some agencies that are dual agencies that do both fire and EMS transports. And so let's say at um, uh, and I'll use Gretna as an example, if, if, if Gretna were to run less than seventy percent of their EMS calls, it would, it would have kicked them out of getting that seventy percent. But let's say we look at Gretna and we say, wow, they answered a hundred percent of their fire calls, did a great job, and they only answered, you know, forty percent of their EMS calls. We still didn't want to penalize them because they'd, they'd gotten out on all the fire calls. So if they were due to get another three thousand dollars, we'd give them fifty percent of that, as an example. Uh, so it was brought up by the Board that they would like to see a uh, a bottom number to that, you know, that they didn't go below X. So one of the things I went back and looked at and put in here was if an agency, uh, they could get still half of that, but they could not go below fifty percent on either service, if that makes sense. Then they would still be eligible to get at least half of the, that last kicker. So um, that's in there. And then the other one that came up was, uh, they wanted to see in the policy or in the, in the um, agreement, something to the manner of if you have someone who uh, goes out with a major medical condition, let's say they have a back surgery, that they have some kind of clearance procedure before they come back and they're active, and you have, the Fire Chief of that department has some kind of note that says, yes, they've been cleared to come back and run. But I think instead of putting that in the document, that needs to actually be a policy versus, you know, in, in, cause before long, if we're not careful, we could start adding all kinds of policies to the doc, to the agreement, and that's not the right place for them. But I agree with what they want to do, and, and it is, uh, I think it is a fair thing. Um, because from a liability standpoint, if I'm a volunteer or, and I go out and let's say I have neck surgery, and I'm out for six weeks, and I've come back on the seventh week and I start running calls again, and I pick up a patient and I get hurt in my neck, and I had never had a doctor's clearance, potentially, you know, the county could be on the hook for that as far as our accident sickness policy. Uh, or, you know, let's say I have a major medical condition, I haven't been cleared by the doctor, where I've been out maybe having surgery or something, and I, I'm driving an apparatus, and that, you know, that condition causes me to crash, and, you know, I injure someone. That's a liability on that fire department, it's a liability on the county. So uh, we uh, worked on a policy, and I believe Chris took that to the association to review as well. I've let a couple, I let Clarence, uh, Monday, our acting county administrator, also review that. He's been in fire service for thirty-plus years as a Fire Chief and volunteer. Uh, let him review it as well. He didn't see any issues with it. And I, but I believe the association's doing, is looking at it, and uh, but that is one of the things that they did want to see, uh, when we brought, when the doc, brought the document back, is something covering the county for that type. And I think some of y'all, talking to some of the fire chiefs, some of y'all already have that policy. I know you, you told me at Gretna, you all already require that for something like that, so uh, those were the two changes that they did send back to us.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. Slim?
So you, you saying you're not gonna attach the policy to the service agreement?
I think it needs to be a separate thing, because in the service agreement, it says, agencies will follow policies that have been adopted, and, you know, those policies are adopted in here. So, I mean, it's already in there if you, if you make it a policy, and plus, making it a policy, if it needs to be tweaked, that's easier to do than having to tweak the agreement, because that always has to go back to the Board of Supervisors. So, you know, there, there's, I think you're better off creating a policy. It accomplishes, at the end of the day, it accomplishes the goal of what they wanted.
And I would agree with that, that, because we don't want to get too policy-heavy in the agreement, because then it may hinder, like, right now, we're getting ready to be in the new fiscal year. This is the last Board of Supervisors meeting, and July one's the new year. And let's just say we didn't hammer that out tonight, then we're not gonna have a service agreement for our fire and rescue agencies to go by to get their allocated funding that they deserve and they're not gonna need, uh, starting July one. So I, I, I definitely don't think it needs to be part of the policy. Uh, Chief Fowler, he said it got kicked down to the association. What was the association's take on it and recommendations?
They asked it to be tabled and allow them to review it, get some legal information on it. Uh, one of the big concerns is how would a Fire Chief police this? I mean, it's a good chance that somebody's out and I never know, and this is worded at three days, I believe, and I went so far as I actually called our insurance provider and talked with him, and his first question was, how you gonna police it? And he said, second of all, he said, I don't think you actually have the, the right from HIPAA to request that since he's not an employee of yours. And his words were, if we had somebody, like Mr. Slim referenced, is that before the insurance entertained paying the claim, they're gonna do diligence and talk with the doctors and research the previous doctor to see if he had been cleared to do so, and if not, they wouldn't pay it.
You had a conversation with?
Mark Bowery today.
Cause I talked to him this after, this afternoon.
I talked to him at five-thirty.
I talked to him before that, and he was all in favor of.
He was in Augusta County and.
Yeah.
And uh, he told me, he said, I don't know how a volunteer Fire Chief would police it. He said, if it's paid people, I can understand. He said, cause you gonna know if they showed up for work or not.
I had that same conversation, just the opposite response.
I don't know. I guess maybe we need to bring him up here and sit him down.
That may be best. But i- in, as far as the three-day thing, that's not necessarily, the, the, there's an example in the policy that says if somebody were out sick for three days with a, a cold or, or a flu or something, that isn't something reported. What you have to go by is the definition, which came from the Family Medical Leave Act of what a major health, um, or serious health condition is, and that's what you would go by. And that is something that overnight hospitalization, including um, prenatal care, including uh, period of incapacity or subsequent treatment in condition with overnight care, continued treatment for chronic or long-term conditions under the care or supervision of a healthcare provider, included under this heading are chronic conditions, asthma, epilepsy, et cetera, that continue over an extended period of time and may cause episodic, episodic, rather than continued period of incapacity and conditions that are not usually incapacitating, but would result in a period of incapacitation of more than three consecutive calendar days if medical treatment were omitted. Um, chemotherapy, dialysis, pregnancy, et cetera. Note that incapacity means the inability to work, attend school, or perform regular daily activities, uh, eating, washing, walking, et cetera, because of serious health conditions or treatment for a recovery from a serious health condition. So, but I do, I do agree with something that Dean said. There are times you may not know that. That is very cra- you know, you have a member you don't see for three months, and you don't know that there could be that issue. So yes, there is that possibility. I do agree with that. Uh, that's, we talked about that, um, because I got asked why we had someone who had potentially returned and they'd have a serious condition. And I said, well, we don't always know that. I mean, we don't see all the volunteers. I said, that is possible. We could have somebody out here who, serious problem, and we, we may have not have seen them, Fire Chief may not have seen them, and that is, that could happen. That is very realistic. So I've brought that um, same scenario up too. So I've brought that same scenario up to one of the Board members.
I agree. Most of us meet monthly, you know, you may go for a month and not, not see any of your members, but that doesn't mean that they could have been in the hospital and out, and, and nobody never knew it.
But I think, I think the bottom line at the end of the day is there needs to be some kind of check and balance for those who do know.
Yeah, but do legally, do they have to tell you what's wrong with?
I can't answer that. I can't answer that. But you as a Fire Chief, if you know it.
You know, with HIPAA laws and, I mean, I'm, I'm not telling you, I know you no better than anybody, but how do you?
You as a Fire Chief, if you know, if it's known to you.
Yeah, if you know it.
And you let that individual get up and drive that fire truck that caused a crash, that comes back on the Fire Chief potentially. So there is that liability for that.
Shouldn't the county attorney take a look at this and put together something? Because I agree with you. The Chiefs, I, I can't see putting that burden on the Chief, even if they in passing knew somebody mentioned it briefly, it doesn't mean that they know that in depth.
I did have the county attorney look at this, and he gave me good, but I can give him, if you want him to come speak on that, we may be better off.
I think that would probably be the best. And I also think that some of these situations with the paid and volunteer staff combining and stipends, these individuals may actually end up being considered contract workers for the county or subcontract workers if we're not careful. And I think that needs to be something that the county attorney would address.
You're talking about volunteers that are being paid?
If they receive a stipend, they could easily be considered a contract worker, subcontract worker.
I'm trying to think of a situation where, and we, because we don't know who gets stipends and who don't. That's another issue.
Well, see, that's what I'm trying to say is that this, this situation, and with these contracts that we're having right here, are some real gray areas there. I work with contractors, subcontractors all, all the time in my job, and I know there's a lot of gray area there. So I think we need to maybe do a little bit of investigation with that.
Well, I mean, the way I see that particular, I don't see that that pertains to this particular matter, because any individual receiving a stipend from a incorporated volunteer agency is acting as an agent of that incorporated volunteer agency, not the county.
That's only if they are incorporated.
I think a little more.
I do believe they all are.
Yeah.
So for sake of this service agreement, because if we don't get the service agreement kicked to the Board and they don't approve it, essentially, there's going to be somebody that says, well, we're not tied to giving them their money starting July 1, and we know that can't happen. So, because these agencies have to operate. So I would agree that we need to separate what we're talking about tonight with the, the, the reporting policy. And I think it would even go a step further. This commission needs to make an ad hoc committee to meet with, what's his name, Chris Bowery, is that?
Mark Bowery.
Mark Bowery from our insurance, Vaden Hunt, the county attorney, a member from the Association, and a member or two from this body to sit down and hammer out a, a document that is going to be legal, because I agree with Coleman and Chief Fowler and everybody else that has stayed in here. I don't want to be hanging our Fire Chiefs out either. The county don't want to be hung out to dry, and our Fire Chiefs don't want to be hung out to dry if they don't legitimately know about something. So, but to back up one step, the other, because there was two pieces to this, the first piece was the benchmarks. So just so everybody understands here, the benchmark is still 70% to get your full funding.
That is correct.
All right, to get a portion of your funding, we can't go below 50% on either side, either service. Is that correct?
No, you'd have to have at least 70 on one.
70 on one.
And not below 50 on the other.
Okay, so let's say my fireside stayed, you know, 90-plus percent, and my EMS side dropped below 70%, I mean, 50%, then that's when I wouldn't get?
Correct.
The funding. Okay, does everybody understand that portion of it? Because I think that's what's going to be voted on tonight in the actual service agreement.
Yeah, that's in the agreement, yeah.
Okay. So let's do this in two ways, if everybody agrees with me. Again, I'm just speaking out loud. Y'all, y'all tell me. Let's, let's make a, let's take a vote or a motion, if anybody wants to entertain that, on the service agreement with the change of 50% being the benchmark, the lowest benchmark, get your money. And then, and then we can make an ad hoc committee after that to go back and review this, this situation with the reporting and the insurance. Because I really think we need to take our time and do our due diligence on that. I mean, I looked at the policy. I had no issue with the policy, but I mean, I, I agree, if we've got insurance people saying this and saying that, and this body doesn't agree, then we need to do our due diligence to bring it back. So, so again, that's up to you guys. That's, that's what I would do.
You know, I questioned whether or not we needed an ad hoc committee. I think that the county attorney, Vaden Hunt, ought to be able to research this and do it on his own.
And we can go that route, too.
And he's hired for the county, let him do it. I don't know what good we could bring as an ad hoc committee.
Right.
We need something to vote on.
Yeah.
That's my opinion on that.
You, you want me to have him come? I can ask Vaden to come to the next meeting.
Yeah, I just think we need some direction. The only reason I was saying it's an ad hoc committee was so that there may be some things he doesn't think about, because not knocking Vaden at all, but Vaden's an attorney, Vaden's not a Fire Chief. And so there may be some situations that Chief Fowler, or Chief Casper, or Coleman down at Renan, or Kermit out at Callens, or some of these guys, Troy Talat, Tostel, can think of that, you know what I'm saying, that might add to, he needs to really look into and, and research for legality reasons. So I definitely think, you know, even if he comes and speaks, we still need to make sure that everybody's in agreements, the Fire Rescue Association and the Commission, before we send it to the Board, to say this is going to be our policy that we're going to make these people go by.
Well, I do agree with you that it would need to be in two different parts.
Yeah.
And we need to vote on one tonight.
All right, so does anybody want to entertain a, to produce a motion to accept the service agreement, just talking about the benchmarks?
The only question I got before we, before a motion comes is, for those that are serving in the Fire and Rescue Association, or those that are serving in the fire department, do y'all feel that this is a, a, a fair number?
Chief Fowler, you want to?
I will tell you this, this was discussed last Wednesday night in the Association, and it was approved unanimously to the Association.
Thank you.
As written.
That's a good question. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the service agreement with the, with the new benchmarks approved also.
Got a motion on the floor?
I'll second that.
All right, got a second by Mr. Sellers. Any discussion on the motion? All right, if not, we'll take a roll call vote.
James Holling.
Yes.
Ben Meeks.
Yes.
Alan Casper.
Yes.
Ward Roland.
Yes.
Tim Cassell.
Yes.
Brian Shields.
Yes.
Coleman Mayhem.
Yes.
Kermit King.
Yes.
Steve Stallings.
Yes.
John Brown.
Yes.
Bert Sellers.
Yes.
Vic Ingram.
Yes.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. That passes unanimously. All right, Mr. Slim, do we need to make a motion to table the policy and invite Mr. Hunt back to our meeting next month so we can discuss this in more detail?
If you can do that, yeah.
Okay, so entertain a motion to table the second part of this.
I'll move it, we table the second part and ask Mr. Hunt to come speak with us.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Casper?
Second.
Second by Mr. King.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
As you guys probably well know, there's so many different elements and branches of law, and there's so many different little pieces to this that is very troubling. And no disrespect to Mr. Hunt, I'm sure he'll have to reach out to some expert in that specific field, but this is something that really needs to, to be dove and looked into more so than what has already taken place. I'm not, I saw what, what Chris had sent me by way of an email, but, you know, there's so many different elements or possibilities that go into this. You may have a serving member that has an issue that he don't, he or she doesn't tell anybody about. And so, you know, how are you going to manage, how are you going to police that? And is there any consequences if they do have a pre-existing condition that they don't share? Because she knows as well as I, a lot of people are very quiet about their health condition. So this, I think is much greater than what's written, and, and we need to really slow down, take a stronger look at this, so we, we'll all be covered. But another thing I want to say is that regardless of the, the time restraints, budgetary, and otherwise, I would never vote to withhold funding from any department until something was worked out. I, I think we should go ahead as promised, as planned, and then get it worked out. So withholding funds for punitive reasons, I'm not in favor of that, and I would not support that. So I want you to know that.
Appreciate that. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, if not, roll call vote.
James Holling.
Yes.
Ben Meeks.
Yes.
Alan Casper.
Yes.
Ward Roland.
Yes.
Tim Cassell.
Yes.
Brian Shields.
Yes.
Coleman Mayhem.
Yes.
Kermit King.
Yes.
Steve Stallings.
Yes.
John Brown.
Yes.
Bert Sellers.
Yes.
Vic Ingram.
Yes.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. That passed unanimously. All right, we're down to item D on the new business, ad hoc committee report on EMS and fire billing. Chief Neal, want to come up and speak?
Thank you, thank you for coming tonight, sir.
I got a ride. I got some of those.
You got to save gas, James.
Okay, good afternoon, good afternoon. My name is Mark Neal, I'm Fire Chief of Ringo, Fire and Rescue. So the last meeting, Kermit King was Acting Chairman, he appointed a committee to look into the EMS billing rates for the upcoming year, starting July 1st, okay? So the committee put together was myself, KCC from Public Service, Alan Casper, a member here, and Assistant Chief Gretna, and Jimmy Holly, a member here on the Commission also. So we got together, and what we done, and I, I think is a good way to, to look at it instead of just coming off, something off your sleeve. I took out billing company, which we use A and B Billing, they're out of Paducah, Kentucky. They came out of Virginia Beach and bought a company out. They're a very large billing company. We've been using them for years, and I think some of y'all probably do, too. So what we done, I talked to the girl, I talked to a lot down there, and she sent me a sheet with nobody's rescue squad name on it other than ours, but she sent me a sheet up here, faxed it, with comparison rates of EMS billing for the state of Virginia, okay? So this company that we use, and some of y'all use, they, they carry 62 rescue squads in the state of Virginia. So that would give you a good comparison, you know, what people charge. Plus, they got about 10 surrounding states that they also bill for. It's a very large company. So I thought we got good information right there. So if you look in your packet, and I actually handed one out, I had to tell you to scratch through one figure, but it's in the packet, so here's what we done. We had met, and of course, all of you know, inflation, the equipment goes up, the medical supplies are going up, we don't even want to kick diesel fuel around. I mean, all of us is transporting, is, is already shot our load for allotment this year already with the price of diesel fuel. I think, you know, our trucks get six, seven miles a gallon, and then they diverge, and you fly into Gretna and Marshall, Person County, North Carolina and stuff, you just burn it up, and everybody else is, too. So the items that we looked at, and you got your paper in front of you, so let's do the mileage first, and I'm going to give you the comparison. So the mileage, our group recommended this year, starting July 1, all this take, will take effect after it goes through the chambers and the Board of Supervisors, is that we would charge $17 a mile. The state average right now is 1468. There's some people getting 18, some people getting 19. This was put out last year, so you know what the diesel fuel was doing, you know, probably a dollar plus a gallon higher than all of us spending money. So we recommended $17 a mile. BLS non-emergent, and that rate, we put out for $600. The state average last year on that was 558. And you're going to see, we're not throwing a big increase out there, okay? But it was 558, we put six, 600, I think we was getting 550 last year, actually was, was under the rate. The BLS emergent rate was set at 650, we put it up to 650. Last year, average on what they sent us was 584, and that's, you know, we just put it up a little bit. The ALS non-emergent, we went to 775, 775, and that's ALS personnel when backing your truck, you know, you're not working the code and nothing, but you got a situation where you need ALS personnel. The state on that was 741, and the 775 is our recommendation. ALS emergent, they, 780 was last year's in the, in the state, and we, we didn't go up much, we asking 800, $800 for that. And then, of course, you got ALS Level 2, that's when you're working very bad, trauma, cardiac arrest call, whatever, and the state average was 9, 959 right there. And we put it at $1,000, and that's basically, you know, you got the medics involved with that. Something that's come up pretty recently, and I'll be honest with you, we just started doing this, I think some of you may have, and some of you still might not be doing it. So it's a thing called treat and release. And we getting more and more and more calls, and I'm sure Ben, Dean, everybody else around here, you, you probably got a 10 to 12% call now where you go, you get a refusal, no transport or treat and release, if that's, makes sense to everybody, and I think it does. So what we looked at, and I don't have a state average on this, but people are doing it. The lady at A and B said people are definitely doing it. So we're looking at $400. So what we, we're looking at is you get a call to somebody's house, let's, let's just say a diabetic, I use that, and you get to the house, and then say you got a blood sugar of 15, I'm just using that, and they're pretty much unresponsive, okay? So you got the bag of fluid, you run through them, IV, you run a bag of fluid through them, you get the sugar up to 65 or 70, next thing you know, boom, they wake up, they're looking at you, wow, man, what are you doing here, blah, 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 and they're fine, okay? So, and we have this happen a lot, but I'm just glad, I'm glad we can do it. But, you know, after they wake up, it's like, hey, I don't need to go to the hospital, okay? And you can't make them go. So that's fine, we got them back straight where they should be, and what we, we done our job. So we have to leave and go to ER and change out our drug box, and get our fluids back, and, and make a trip back home. So it's called a treat and release, so we put a $400 charge on that, okay? And we'll see how we come out there. The other one, the last one, is called a refusal. And all of us that run crew that are familiar with refusals, so you go to somebody's house, and, I mean, let's just say they had a stomach ache, I'm just throwing that out there, and you get there, well, I don't feel good, so you do a blood pressure check, you may check your glucose, you check your O2 sat, your heart rate and all that stuff, and they look pretty good, and this and that and the other, well, you know, and a lot of them, you know what they do, well, what do you think? Should I go or not? And, you know, we not a doctor, and we can't look at your x-ray. So the person says, well, I feel better now that I know my blood pressure's good and my sugar's good, so I don't want to go. So that's called a refusal, okay? So we really didn't treat them, we just, we took vital signs on them, okay? We didn't give them oral glucose, we didn't run a bag of fluid in them, we didn't put them on oxygen or nothing, you know? We just basically checked them over, and, and they refused. So we put a $100 charge on that. The last thing, and we get a lot of these, and it's called baseless service call, okay? So we get dispatched to somebody's house that has tripped over a roof, in a yard, fell in a yard, and can't get up. Or you have somebody that's fell out of the wheelchair, or somebody maybe fell out of the tub or something, they can't get up. So you go, and even some of the fire departments do this, and rescue, and you go, you pick them up, and, you know, you talk to them, check them, they're not injured, they just needed help getting up. needed help getting up. So we left that at a zero. You know, you don't want to penalize people that, if they older or they in a wheelchair, you know, they needed help picking up, I mean, that's what we out there for too. So we didn't charge anything for a service, we call it a service call. So basically, you know, we're looking at the increase in medical equipment prices, we're looking at a huge increase in diesel fuel prices. So we presented this here to y'all tonight, and I guess it would go in front of maybe a finance committee or whoever in the board of supervisors. So it's not a huge rate hike on none of this, but it is a slight increase to help the fire departments, you know, keep the trucks on the road, cost of ambulances is up, a lot of people, like you say, paying a stipend, paying people to stay at a station, you know, where we used to could put some of the money we took in from compassionate soft bill in the treasure and have it for different things, a lot of us ain't got that no more, you're basically paying it out to run the calls now. So, and keep in mind too, and this is one thing Lacey told me there where she works at, and y'all already know this, you got your Medicare, your Medicaid, a lot of these insurance companies have got their set rate, okay? So I could charge them $5,000 for going to get them, and they're going to pay me that $229.46, okay? So you got some companies that allow more to pay you, and some, you know, some of your state insurances, government insurances, and stuff like that, they're going to pay you a set rate, I don't care what you charge. But some companies still do, you know, look at the work you're doing, read your narrative, and will pay you some of the charge you do. So that's our presentation on the price, price rates, starting July 1st for the rescue squads in this county. Anybody got any questions for me?
Chief Neal, so if this is billed to the patient and they don't pay it, then...
They, we don't go after them, basically what the county, we agreed to is compassionate soft rate. Now, the billing company usually will send the person the EOB bill maybe twice. You know, I've had people call me, for example, you had an $850 bill, and your insurance paid $500, and they called me and said, Mike, I got a balance left of $350. And I tell them, you know, I can't make you pay that, if you want to pay some of it, it's fine, it's like a donation to us, or if you want to pay it all, but you won't be subpoenaed and go to court for the balance of that money, okay? So that's why it's called compassionate soft bill, okay? And I guess most of y'all, just like we do, what the insurance pays, we get. I hadn't, I hadn't had a whole lot of people come in, you know, and bring a check, you know? And if you got no insurance, you know, it's just the way it is, we take care of you, but we don't take you to court or nothing to make you pay, okay? So we accept basically what the insurance pays.
Yeah, the entire county is like at the soft bill, we'd have to have an ordinance change in order to hard bill. So the entire county does that soft compassionate billing. And just to add to what Chief Neal was saying, because it's not in the packet, and that's all right, I brought, I was on this committee last year, I got the document that was approved last year, they're only recommending guys, a dollar increase on mileage, an increase, BLS levels stay the same, ALS 1, $25 increase, ALS 2 was a $50 increase, we already had a treat, no transport at 400 in there, so no increase there, patient refusal from 75 to 100, so that's a $25 increase. So, I mean, you're not, I mean, pretty much the biggest increase I see is a 50 bucks increase that we're looking at. And I think we all can agree that with the fuel costs right now, and, I mean, we just bought an ambulance at Gruttnen, it was $306,000, just bought a cardiac model, it's $35,000. I can keep going on and on and on, we're all having to do that. So, you know, I, especially that we're not hard billing, I think it's important that we try to maximize what returns we can get from people's insurance.
So like I say, basically, we're not trying to take nobody to the cleaners on this whatsoever, we're just trying to keep up with the times, and maybe we hadn't pushed it out as far as we could have. I think the biggest thing right now, like I say, is the diesel fuel and the mileage. I mean, these trucks get six, seven miles a gallon, you go down there, put 30 gallons of fuel in, spend 150 bucks, 155 bucks, you know, just to put a half tank of fuel back in some of these trucks, and it costs a whole lot, and especially on the diversion, you got so much diversion, last night, you had Gruttnen, you had Halifax County, you had Danville, you had Mossville, one town was on diversion last night. And anybody got popped off, we'd have been in trouble. We went far as Person County and Roxbury, transport from Ringo, of course, I've been to Gruttnen a lot, and I know a lot of y'all went up in Leesburg, Bedford County, Moorhead, Cascade, and Brazos, and them going into Carolina. So that's, hey, you dumping some fuel when you do that, okay? So if y'all feel, I mean, we put 17, if you think it needs to go a little bit more, you know, y'all say so, it's just a recommendation from the four of us, okay?
What did you say the state average was on it?
They showing 1468, but that was last year, and that's for those diesel fuels that pop, you know, dollar, dollar, quarter, a gallon higher than it is than it was then.
But there was, what he presented and showed us in the paperwork, when we all got together, there was places charging as much as 19.
Right.
Right.
So, and some over 19, so that average is skewed a little bit.
And I'm going to say this too, and Dean may chip in, or some of y'all may know, and it was a good question, actually Jimmy brought it up at one of our meetings, so I got my guy shopping around like I would shop around for gas in my car, okay? I go up the road for gas, it's 429, I go up the next intersection, it's 445, 455, I might say a 419. So most people are going to get that 419, 429. Now, where we are at on 58, one of my main centers I used a lot, they went to 589 on diesel. I said, wow! So I go up the road, and they, they, they 529, and then another one's 549. So we've been trying to get to 529 and 549. Now, I talked to some of them in the county, and who, Chris, who's one of the ladies that handles the billing, is it Kim, or Robin, or some of them, anyway, I think it's Voyager.
Wendy.
Voyager? Wendy, okay. So I asked her, I said, if I go to this station and pay 589 for fuel, when you get the bill, are you paying 589? I know we get a discount bulk rate, okay? You got to be smart what you doing. So they're using a discount bulk rate, and my understanding, they are paying the bulk rate if it's 589 or 549 for me, but she said, I want to think each week, the company that's doing this billing is going up. You know, I'm just saying, say last week it was 489, next week it was 499, now you're paying 509. So the higher price bill I send her, you know, it's going to make the whole county's insurance, I'm not insurance, but gas prices and diesel prices go up the way I see it. But we tried a shot and get to lowest on that, so, you know, that's something we need to look at too.
Chief Fowler, just some data.
The fuel rate is at a county rate, that's the reason we left it going straight to the county, as far as the cards and the billing, and the taxes and the different rates that we can be taking off of, the county's actually handling that and taking it off.
Right.
And you can actually, I don't know if you're getting it, but Wendy should be sending you a report.
Yeah.
Start looking over on the left side, and it'll tell you what you actually paid for. And it's a lot. I know we have to buy it up at the Circle K some, and it's almost a dollar and a half a lot of times less than what's at the pump.
Right.
So they, the county is doing due diligence to get us all of that off of it that they can.
Like I say, if the rates keep going up even through the county some, and they do jump them some, you know, we are, that money comes out of all our budget savings, costing your fire department, or your rescue squad, the money at the end of the year.
The basic rate's going up for everybody, regardless if you get those taxes off of it, it's still going up.
And I would say, Dean, you and Ben, probably keep up with it more than me, I would, I got to say probably every rescue squad, Tim, all y'all, you got to be past your allotment.
Well, that's what I was going to ask Director Key, did he have any idea how many is past their fuel consumption?
I haven't looked at it.
I got you. I would go to Troy, y'all passed it?
Matt, I'd go to say probably every, every rescue squad, just because of how much transport with the diversions and stuff, and I'm sure some of the fire departments, I mean, they're having the same problem, but I mean, I know the rescue squads really have struggled with it because of the diversions and stuff like that. I mean, we're thousands of dollars over at Gruttnen right now, so...
But this is just a recommendation, if y'all as a group want to go up a little more on the diesel with the economy way it is, and the price is at the roof, it's up to y'all. Anybody else got any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Neal. All right, gentlemen, so y'all got the proposed changes to the EMS billing rates. We entertain some discussion or emotion on this document, and I want to thank that ad hoc committee for getting together on this. All right, here, no discussions, anybody want to push forward a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Would it be beneficial, and I don't want to get too far out here, to do another dollar a mile since the diesel fuel is going so high? And by, I mean, the predictions is looking at, we're right at $6 a gallon now.
We're talking nine.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just asking, would it be beneficial or would it, since the national averages were, what it said, I mean, this was saying 14, but it said some of them were charging as much as 19?
That was a year ago.
That was a year ago, and I mean, you know, like I said, you know, we looking at Pennsylvania County is a big county, and we are long ways away from everywhere, no matter where you, no matter where you start at, it's a long ways away from everywhere.
I've got one question, how often can this mileage or any of these be changed? Is that a yearly thing, or...
So we, the last time, before last year, they hadn't been updated since 2019, and then the commission last year said, hey, we need to start looking at this every year. And so we voted those changes we made, and I don't remember how much the changes were, but we made changes to it last year, brought the numbers up to a closer average, and then this year, the director, Slint, before he moved on, he actually brought up and said, hey, we probably need to go ahead and be discussing this again, and looking at it every year, which I agree, this body, no matter if I'm not here, anybody else is not here, needs to be reviewing that every year because of the situation right now. And there's nothing in, I mean, I don't think we need to be changing it every six months, but there's nothing that says we can't review this and change it again in six months, is that, is that correct, Mr. Slint, Director Key? I mean, if he, as long as it is reviewed and, because it'll go to the finance committee if we adopt it tonight, they have to okay it, and then it'll go to the board of supervisors, and they ultimately give the stamp of approval.
My thought was, you know, would you want to lock yourself in on 17, even 18 or $19 when, you know, they're forecasting this to get really way out of hand, even a diesel shortage?
Yeah.
You know, if a diesel shortage, it could go eight, nine dollars a gallon, you know? So that was only, my concern was that maybe we'd be a little ahead of the game here and bump it up, and then if we can look at it again in six months, we may be glad that we did it, you know, or vice versa.
Yeah, I would definitely agree.
Because basically, kind of like when we discussed earlier, we don't want to sell ourselves short, because an insurance company, or whether it be state or private, is only going to pay what they allocate. But if what they will allow is more than what we're asking, they're not going to, they're not going to max out on it, they're going to pay you what you ask, so we don't want to sell ourselves short either.
And if we're only getting this money from basically insurance companies, and, you know, the average person is not paying this anyway, I mean, I think you should get what you can get just on this, on this, just because of the diesel alone, you know? And I think Alan's right, if they're going to pay it, we need to make sure we get it.
Yes, sir. I agree, I'm saying maximizing your, your returns, and I seen a study somewhere that actually said you should be 125% above on your billing rates what Medicare and Medicaid allows, just so we can completely maximize our returns, but I think we're below that here, so I think we're being very fair with what we're looking at on these numbers. Again, it's no major changes other than the mileage, if we do, you know, decide to go another dollar, you're looking at $2 increase from last year to now, and y'all know how much fuel's increased over the last year, over the last six months really. Any other discussion on the topic? Like I said, we will need to entertain a motion if you guys do wish to increase these rates.
I mean, I'd make a motion that you increase it by at least a dollar.
Okay. All right, so do you want your motion to be to send forth all of these figures to the finance committee with the increase from 17 to actually $18, right? Because what y'all presented was 17. Okay. Not trying to say it's motion for him, but... All right, so we've got a motion on the floor to send forth the ad hoc committee's report to increase the fire and rescue rates with the only change, you know, with the document presented going from 17 to $18 a mile on mileage. So I hear a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Mr. Sellers. All right, so we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, let's roll call vote.
James Holling.
Yes.
Ben Meeks.
Yes.
Alan Casper.
Yes.
Ward Roland.
Yes.
Tim Cassell.
Yes.
Brian Shields.
Yes.
Coleman Mayhew.
Yes.
Kermit King.
Yes.
Steve Stallins.
Yes.
John Brown.
Yes.
Bert Sellers.
Yes.
Vic Ingram.
Yes.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
That's the first time Mike Neal ever got more money than you asked for.
What do you think, Mike?
I know they always ask for enough.
All right. Again, appreciate you guys that sat on that ad hoc committee, I know it was Alan and Casey and Mike and some others, appreciate y'all doing that. All right, that brings us down to Fire and Rescue Memorial Ad hoc Committee Report, and that'll be mine. So we got together a week ago, and before the board of supervisors meeting up here, we had a really good, long, productive meeting, myself, Commissioner Coleman, Dean Fowler, Chief at Blairs, Troy Tyler was there, Director Slint, Scott Hutcherson, we had a really good meeting, we've established or possibly have a location, and we're working on that now to see if we can make that happen. If we do, in the next, we're going to have another meeting before the next commission meeting, so if we can get something, a commitment on a location, we'll bring that back to you guys. We've also, Coleman actually put together a really good document, and we've all reviewed and going to be adding to it, building off of it, as far as the stipulations, kind of how we're going to govern this thing, I mean, obviously, we got the line of duty death that'll be put on the memorial, and then we're also looking at maybe some years of service type recognition to put people on the memorial, so we're reviewing that now. We've got that document going, and then we also discussed funding, we've, we're going to be in communication with the county to figure out a way to house funding as money comes available and donations come available for this. So, again, very preliminary stages, guys, but we did have a very long meeting, and we're all excited about it, I think it's going to be something nice, is it going to be fast? No, because we need to take our time and do it right, but I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be good. So we will bring you hopefully a better update next month with a little bit more information. All right, that brings us down to, I believe, F.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, did you want to discuss the fire billing part of that? There was no discussion on the fire billing part.
Oh, yes, sir, let's back up, okay. So this would be back under the ad hoc committee for EMS and fire billing, so Chief Neal, did y'all have any recommendation on the fire billing?
No, we asked, the EMS billing, the Association, the government, the committee, the fire calls, I got back to six, three rescue squads, so, you know, it's a little bit...
Okay. Okay. So Chief Fowler.
We actually, in the association meeting, discussed that and appointed a committee to take a look at it, to bring a report back to you all to look at fire billing.
Okay, all right. Is everybody comfortable waiting to see what their report is? And then we'll, okay, all right, thank you, Chief Fowler. Just keep us updated. All right, so that'll bring us down to F again, which will be, I think first we was going to do the contingency money with the association, their recommendation, so Chief Fowler, we'll turn it back over to you.
Chris Key and myself sat down and looked at it, it's a lot of ways to go, I realize that, there were some concerns about whether or not the funding was being done fairly, and whether or not the standalone fire agencies were receiving their fair share. So what we came up with is to try to make it straight, straight on the line with both sides, fire and EMS, is raising both block fundings to $26,500, and basically what that'll do is a standalone fire or a fire agency will receive $3,500 addition in their block funding, and a EMS agency will receive 1,500, and that'll put all the agencies at $26,500 annually. Fire and Rescue was presented this last Wednesday night, and everybody seemed to be good with it, and they voted unanimous to send it back to you all for discussion and approval.
All right, thank you, Chief Fowler. So any comments or questions for the president of Fire and Rescue Association, or discussion on the matter?
How does this compare to last year, Dean?
Last year's fire was 23,000. Last year's fire was twenty-three thousand, and EMS was twenty-five thousand. So basically, fire received thirty-five hundred, will receive thirty-five hundred dollars if approved, and the EMS agencies will get fifteen hundred for this coming year.
It was originally presented for three thousand for each side, and, you know, with the discussion of trying to, to make it equal between the fire and EMS side, we decided to try to keep it equal across the line to make both sides at twenty-six thousand five hundred. And that was with that ninety-seven thousand dollars which we had asked for out of the contingency funding.
Okay.
Chief Fowler, you saying if, if our association was okay with those numbers?
The members present at Fire Rescue Association voted unanimous to, there was some discussion, but in the end, that, that was the agreement, that everybody supported it.
And is that in the packet, Director Key? I don't, I didn't, I didn't think so, okay. Does everybody understand, or need any clarification on the increases we're talking about? And this is, this is from the contingency money, so again, this will have to, if we approve it, it'll go to the finance committee, and then, you know, they have to do their thing with it, and then it goes to the board to decide if it's something they wish to entertain. I think it, I think y'all did a good job, I mean, it's, it's, I've said it before, I served two years ago on the committee, trying to make these decisions on who gets this funding and how you break it down, and no matter how you shake it, it's never, everybody's gonna have their argument of why they should get more or less or whatever. So, you know, we try to do the best we can to protect our, our system here. So I thank y'all for looking at it, and I think you took back the recommendations from this body to look at the standalone fire departments, give them a little bit of increase, um, you know, because they can't bill for those EMS rates, uh, for the EMS calls, so.
So over last year, it was an increase of, from last year to this year, for the standalone fire departments?
Thirty-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Chief Fowler, so you're saying you took it away from the rescue squads?
No. This is the actual contingency fund of ninety-seven thousand, is that right, Chris? Ninety-seven thousand that we're requesting that the board of supervisors allocate for increasing funding for the agencies. And that ninety-seven thousand, when you break it down, to make it fair, the only way we could see it was all the agencies, both fire and EMS, come to the same total amount, which is twenty-six five. And so instead of giving three thousand for fire and three thousand for EMS, we reduced the amount that the EMS agencies will get and gave the extra to the fire agencies, because that was some concern from the last meeting here.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, um, this is, these recommendations, I mean, not how we're dispersing out the money right now, which is what we're talking about, but how we got that ninety-some thousand, and, and Director Slump, you was, uh, excuse me, Director Key, but Slump, you was at the time, was in, uh, that position, this was your recommendation for increases, but the board had to pull that out and put it in a contingency fund to see if it was something they could fund, is that correct? Okay, right, and just, just so that everybody understands, we just didn't pull this number out of left field, that, you know, I know Director Slump at the time, and that Director Key have indicated they're gonna try to, every year, recommend increases to our agencies, uh, as long as they're meeting their service agreements, to keep up with inflation and, you know, everything, the times, the way they are, um, you know.
Would, excuse me, would it be bad to ask how many people was involved in the, the committee? Uh, with the, how many, how many stations were represented when they, when they come up with these numbers?
Um, so, as far as the two that just met initially on the document, Dean, that was you and Chris Key, right?
That's correct.
But you presented it to the Fire and Rescue Association, do you have a clue how many agencies was present?
Fourteen.
Okay.
I thought it was fourteen.
I don't know if you had a small few deciding for everybody, or how that worked.
I think it's, it's twenty-three total agencies, you know, with your two standalone rescue squads, you had fourteen there. And, and, and I hope I don't make nobody mad when I say this, but that's why I say it's important that people come out and participate at the association, at these commission meetings, at the board of supervisor meetings, so that everybody gets their fair share, everybody gets their fair, at least you can say you stated your opinion. Now, they can tell you no at the end of the day, but at least you can say, I stated my opinion and what I think it should be. You know, for my agency, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to protect Gretna as far as when I'm not at this body. Now, right now, I'm here to protect all the volunteers, but, you know, each agency should be coming out, sending representation to these meetings to fight for this stuff.
That, that was my train of thought, you know, how many people represented and, and how many people decided, you know, who, who's possibly getting what, so.
All right, what's the commission's, uh, wishes? Do we want to entertain a motion to take this recommendation from the association? And was it voted unanimously to accept, you may have said that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's no opposition to the fourteen that were there, um?
Well, being as it was voted on unanimously and it was well represented, I would support it, I would make a motion that we present this to the board, uh, the contingency funding as presented by the committee.
It was unanimous among the members, the agencies present.
That's all you can do.
Right, okay, I just want to make sure you knew that.
All of the agencies are not represented in the fire commission, in the fire association, are they?
Some of them don't participate, that's correct.
Well, same thing, but everybody there voted unanimously, fourteen out of twenty-three?
I think that's the number, I looked, I don't have it in minutes with me, but I think it was fourteen agencies there.
Okay, I'm satisfied with that. And I don't know what else we do, if somebody's got a better idea, we'll hammer out something different, but, you know, not now for the sake of moving on, we need to, I'd make a motion that we presented this away and.
Thank you, sir, we got a motion on the floor to push forward the contingency funds, uh, the new matrix that's been recommended.
Second.
Second by J.D. Brown. Any discussion on emotion? All right, roll call vote.
James Holly.
Yes.
Ben Minks.
Yes.
Alan Casper.
Yes.
Ward Roland.
Yes.
Tim Cassell.
Yes.
Brian Shields.
Yes.
Coleman Mayhew.
Yes.
Kermit King.
Yes.
Steve Stallins.
Yes.
John Brown.
Yes.
Bert Sellers.
Yes.
Vic Ingram.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate that. All right, that brings us down to our last item, which is the possible changes coming to drug box exchanges. And I see, uh, that our, uh, guest is here tonight, so we're gonna ask Chris Christensen to come down, please, and give his presentation, and I'll let him introduce himself, and then we can discuss him out. Thank you for coming tonight, Chris.
I'm Chris Christensen, I work for Western Virginia EMS Council, I talked to the Rescue Association last week, sorry, I had to be virtually, I had a death in my family. Um, so Board of Pharmacy issued a guidance document, uh, earlier this year that each agency, um, each locality and/or agency had to obtain a controlled substance registration, um, that, that can no longer fall under the regional controlled substance registration. Um, so I think that, uh, from what I understand was that the, uh, the Rescue Association decided to, uh, have the county submit, and then do an addendum for each agency, um, so that way there's only one application, one application fee. Each agency is still listed on an addendum page with their contact information. Uh, but currently, everybody across the state is out of compliance with that, so the Board of Pharmacy is cracking down on that. Um, and so that controlled substance registration is only for Schedule Six medications, which are carried outside of the drug box, so your normal saline, uh, your irrigation, and those kinds of things. Um, and then I also told them that they needed to decide if they were gonna be storing any of the controlled substances, uh, the Schedule Sixes outside of the licensed EMS vehicle, because it does change the application process a little bit, and you're subject to Board of Pharmacy inspection. They do waive the requirement of having to have an alarm system on the storage area, but you do, uh, you are subject to inspection by Board of Pharmacy if you carry any Schedule Sixes outside of a licensed EMS vehicle. Um, and so that was what I presented, and the only thing, other thing that I brought up, uh, last week was, is that the, um, we're just kind of bringing awareness to it, is that the DEA regulations are in draft format, they have been for four years, they got delayed with COVID, uh, but the way that the drug box system currently works in Virginia may no longer meet the DEA regulations when those come out. So it's more of just an awareness thing that, um, Virginia is exploring all the different options with the Board of Pharmacy and with the DEA representatives in Virginia, but the D, uh, depending on what the DEA regulations come out and say, like, we might have to remove the controls from the drug box. There's no changes to the drug boxes right now, I know there's been a lot of rumors flying around, but there's no changes to the drug box currently, um, and there's not any plans in the works to do so. Uh, the one thing that we might have to change with the drug box model is we might have to assign boxes to facilities, because the DEA considers dispensing when it is either destroyed or dispensed to a patient. Um, and so every pharmacy is required to keep accountability of their narcotics. Um, and currently, with the way that the regional drug box system works, the boxes move, there's five hundred and fifty boxes across the region, and those currently move between fifteen hospitals. Um, so we may have to potentially look at assigning boxes to specific pharmacies, uh, for the purposes of their inventory keeping, um, to be in compliance with the DEA, the current DEA regulations. So currently, there's no changes, that's just all awareness. Um, the only thing that has to be done is, uh, is the controlled substance registration with the Board of Pharmacy, is that, um, is a violation currently for everybody across the state. So we're kind of slowly moving across the region and getting everybody in compliance with that. I'll be happy to take any questions, if anybody has any.
Chris, I do have one question.
Okay.
Um, when you say assigning boxes to a specific, uh, like, hospital,
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm gonna use our agency for an example. Uh, we operate under Western Virginia EMS Council.
Okay.
Uh, we transport ninety-nine point nine percent of the time to a hospital that is headquartered in a Brim's area.
Okay.
Uh, we don't, I mean, I'd say one tenth of one percent do, do we actually transport, say, to Dambel, who would be under Western Virginia. Uh, is that gonna be a problem for our agency?
No, um, so actually, Gretna has its own, uh, own hospital license, emergency department license, that falls into our region. Um, so basically, is what would happen is like, boxes would be assigned, like, so like, if your agency primarily transports to Gretna, then all of your boxes would be assigned to Gretna, and that would be the only place that you would be able to exchange them.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
Good question, thank you.
But like I said, there's no changes to the drug box currently, it's more just an awareness thing that we're all awaiting the DEA regulations, there's people across the state that are reviewing different methods to, um, you know, once the DEA regulations come out, how to move Virginia forward.
And for, for, so, but for purposes of what needs to be acted on, Chris, is the Schedule Six, like your normal saline, irrigation, that stuff, and if you're going to house it, which, I mean, I'd say we all have a stock room, so, with supplies in it to keep it stocked. So, um, that's what this body needs to be looking at going forward, and, and is, is it the council's rec, I don't want to put you on the spot, what is the West Virginia EMS Council's recommendation, uh, to go forward to handle that? Would it be for each agency to apply for that license, or would it be better to come from a county?
It's solely at the discretion of the locality and the agencies involved. I mean, we'll probably see a mixture across the region, uh, but it's solely the discretion of the agencies and the localities. It'll be one application with the addendum for each agency, if the locality applies, um, if it's an agency, then every agency will have to apply and pay the hundred and twenty dollar fee.
Okay.
But would it be beneficial for each agency to apply, or would it be better for the, the county to apply for, as a whole?
I think from a, from a money standpoint, I mean, I think it's, it would be more advantageous for a locality to apply and submit one application and pay the hundred and twenty dollar fee versus each agency having to pay the hundred and twenty dollar fee. But that's totally your discretion.
Any other questions or comments for Chris? Thank you for coming tonight, sir.
And one other thing, too, if agencies don't have a location to make a storage area for the Schedule Sixes, to have the Board of Pharmacy inspect, I'm sure that, you know, I might be able to work out some kind of deal with the county to be able to store, then have them distribute it to you, so, that's another possibility as well.
And so, can you just, just for sake of the commissioners, uh, what entails, you know, once they get that license to be able to store those drugs and stuff, what do they have to have to do that, as far as?
I'm not sure exactly what all Board of Pharmacy requires for the inspection of the, uh, the storage outside the licensed EMS vehicle, because that's under their regulatory body. Um, all the information's on the Board of Pharmacy website, we did submit, um, a query to the, uh, Board of Pharmacy, uh, for the purposes of Cool Branch, uh, since they technically reside in Franklin County, but they're a Pennsylvania County agency, and we've not heard back yet, so.
And, and I would imagine, I haven't looked at it directly, but I would imagine some sort of two-locking system and, probably cameras and sign-out system and all that stuff is what they're gonna require.
So the only thing, I know that the only thing that's spelled out on the application is, is that if it's only Schedule Sixes, um, and it's at a licensed EMS agency, uh, then they waive the requirement of an alarm system. But I'm not sure what all the other Board of Pharmacy requirements are.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Chris? We do appreciate you coming tonight, sir, thank you.
And I'll be around, depending by a second.
Okay. All right, so, um, I'm gonna go to the association first, because he presented to you guys. What was y'all's discussion, and did y'all make any recommendations?
We discussed it, and a motion was made and approved that we wanted to go with the county applying for the registration in each department being placed on it as an addendum.
Okay. Um, Director Key, do you wanna, from you guys' standpoint, from y'all's side, do you want to entertain?
Yeah, there's gonna have to be a lot of research done before this can be completed, um, we're not gonna be able to fix it here tonight, uh, because of all the regulations that go along with it, uh, and, and every, everything that goes along with it, there's obviously a cost. So that's some things, we will, uh, we've looked at other agencies and are researching how they do it across the state to see what we think we can afford to do, so this, this is not gonna be a quick, easy fix.
And this may be a question for Chris, I just remembered, but, and you might get to answer it, um, is it going to affect if we go under the locality, and, and I would hope not, since it's gonna be an addendum to it, but if we go under the locality for these Schedule Six drugs, is that gonna affect our EMS license as far as, are we gonna have to be licensed under the county, or can we still be licensed, our own EMS agency? And is it gonna affect our OMD? Because I know like at Gretna, we carry a different OMD than what the county carries, is their OMD, so. And Chris, you're more than welcome to entertain that if you know.
Yeah, it's two separate regulatory bodies, so Board of Pharmacy falls under Department of Professions, where all the EMS calls are under Department of Health, it's two completely separate regulatory bodies, uh, that, that are, that are located, so.
Okay, so it's not gonna win a mix.
It's a two, you don't have to change your EMS agent to license, uh, if it's, that's all regulated by, by the Board of Pharmacy.
Okay. I know there was a lot of concerns about that, so thank you, that clarifies that, so. All right, is there any other discussion on this matter? Um, it's definitely something this body's gonna have to stay on top of, uh, and I do agree, we're gonna have to do some research into it, but, you know, it sounds like we're not gonna have much of a choice, we're gonna have to get into compliance, so, one way or another.
What is it, what's the timeframe that the, that we're having to be in compliance?
I think technically, we're not in compliance now.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I've kind of figured it, but are we looking at a timeframe to get in compliance? Or how long are they giving us to get in compliance, or?
They haven't given us one day to skip, or they, they, the regional council directive, uh, said to bring all the agencies to the county. So they have not given us a proactively, but I'm sure eventually, um, if people listen, we're all.
So we need to be proactive instead of reacting.
As I was saying, I just didn't want to come in here one day and they're gonna say, well, you know, everybody should have been in compliance last week.
We're researching as hard as we can go and finding all the details out about it.
Okay.
And Chris, the last question, there was rumor that the DEA has, has issued a directive that by 2025, the drug boxes have, uh, talking about the actual narcotics in the boxes, uh, something's gonna have to be done with that, where you was referencing maybe, uh, them being assigned to the hospitals, is that, is that cor- Is that, is that correct, or is, is that just a rumor?
So currently, for many years, Virginia, I've heard around the DEA regulations, um, they've never really been compliant. But I'll say where there's no final dispensing records kept, um, I mean, like, for each facility. So the facilities are currently counting, and it's being spent when they're dispensing the boxes. But the DEA actually says that the final dispensing of the drugs destroy their ministry for patients. Um, so apparently, nobody really knows who, like, the narcotics belong to for the final dispensing, where the boxes move around the region. Um, so that's the one thing that the DEA, um, you know, has said that Virginia is not compliant, but Virginia's the last state as a whole to still have a drug box system. There's one locality in Ohio that still has it, and then there's one locality out west that still has it. Uh, but currently, like, that's one of the things that's not regulated, or it's not compliant, but DEA regulations are the final dispensing. And so, um, there's been, like, some discussions on how to, like, do that, whether it may be internally, like, with our staff, with pharmacies around the region, on how to do that. And that was the best method to begin with, as a short-term fix, uh, to be able to kind of bring everything in compliance to the DEA regulation.
Okay.
That's the current DEA regulation. We have no idea when the draft DEA regulations are gonna be introduced at all. Um, you know, for the first time ever in history, the Emergency Access to Medication Act was only seventeen. EMS was actually, they've never been listed before. Um, so nobody really knows what the final, happy, like, DEA regulations are gonna be like, or when they're gonna come out. We've all known it about four years ago, and that's why, like, you know, we started talking to the medical recorders and those types of things about getting their own DEA register in four years ago, for, for the purposes of EMS. Uh, but the DEA regulations, nobody knows a little bit of that. So, um, and obviously, there will rapidly be a transition time, uh, you know, within the DEA regulations, and that's what nobody knows.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yeah, I know this has been rumored or talked about for some time now, that this was coming down the pipe. And so it looks like it's, at least for the Schedule Six drugs, it's already, it's here now. It's at our doorstep. So we're gonna have to, um... So is the commission fine with letting the staff continue to research and bring back some information at our next meeting? And I know it may not be that quick, but just getting what you can together. And, uh, you know, this is something I'm sure we're gonna have to add back on the agenda again, and eventually make some actions on. Unless somebody wants to go a different route tonight.
Yeah, I said, let, you know, let, uh, Public Safety keep, keep researching and, you know, just, I guess, just keep Chief Fowler up to date with the association, so he can pass it on also. And that way, everybody will, you know, because some people, if you can't reach them, he can pass it on and make sure everybody's in, informed as much as possible, because it's kind of, this is gonna be kind of delicate and confusing, I guess, for most people.
So, so we, I would say we need a motion to table this, just so it stays on the agenda, but we need a motion to table this, uh, agenda item. So somebody wants to put that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we table it and, um, and allow staff to come back, um, when they have the information or either head to next meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Got a second? Motion on a second. Any discussion on a motion? All right, roll call vote, please.
James Holly.
Yes.
Ben Minks.
Yes.
Alan Casper.
Yes.
Ward Roland.
Yes.
Tim Cassell.
Yes.
Brian Shields.
Yes.
Coleman Mayhew.
Yes.
Kermit King.
Yes.
Steve Stallins.
Yes.
John Brown.
Yes.
Bert Sellers.
Yes.
All right, that motion passes unanimously. It'll be tabled. Thank you again for everybody coming and talking about that. That's gonna bring us down to other matters from commission members. So I guess we'll actually just start over here. Director Key, anything you wanna add?
Just thank everybody for coming out. Uh, I know I had some, uh, email, uh, issues the other day. Hopefully, we got them worked out, so everybody should receive the packets. Uh, I worked pretty hard to try to get them out as early as possible, so y'all would be able to review them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. B, Commissioner Brown?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Ward. Okay? All right, we'll go back over here. Chief Fowler, anything to add? All right, Chairman Ingram?
Yes, sir, I did have, uh, one thing I wanted to add in regards to the Fire and Rescue Memorial. Uh, probably November, December, I spoke to my friend, Mr. Bert Sellers, uh, about the possibility of having such a memorial. And, you know, we've lost two through the years that would, would qualify, and, um, um, you know, and I appreciate the work you guys are putting into that. But, you know, I, I came on this board to serve, and realizing that a stipend comes with service, I elected not to take the money. And I'm just, uh, I was backed into a corner by having to say this publicly. But, um, I talked to Kim Vanderhyde, probably, um, well, it was, uh, several weeks ago, about the easiest way to, to have the money funded into an account, or funneled into an account. And she said, let, let her talk to our auditors. And what she, uh, told me right before Easter was the easiest thing to do would be to have a separate standalone checking account, rather than for her to have a separate line item within the county budget. And it was just easier to manage. And so I went to American National, National Bank, where I do business, and, and opened a, a checking account, uh, for this memorial project. So not only with this board position, but another board position that I serve on, I'm having county payroll send that money straight to this account. And so, you know, if anybody else feels led to make a donation or to have maybe their stipend sent to that account, uh, payroll has the account information. And I will say that that account is wide open. All you gotta do is say, hey, I wanna see it, uh, so there's no accountability issues. But like I said, I was forced into having to say this publicly. I didn't want to. I wanted to keep it private, because Bert and I talked about this privately, uh, like I said, it was probably November, December of last year. But anyway, uh, there's money going into that account to help pay for this memorial. And so I just wanted to share this with you guys, if any of you are interested, or if you know of anybody that'd like to make a donation to it. It's not my account. I just happened to open it. And so, um, appreciate your, your thought on that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman Ingram. Commissioner Casper?
Uh, nothing other than to thank Mr. Ingram for, uh, taking those steps.
Yes, sir. Mr. Tim Cassell, nothing to add? Okay, yes, sir. Good?
I'd just like to, to say thank you to the men and women that serve across this county every day. It, uh, it doesn't go unnoticed and, um, and appreciate it. And to the committees that have worked hard, um, it takes time, and, uh, I want to say thank you.
Yes, sir. Come meet you. Vice Chair?
Uh, yeah, just, uh, I appreciate everybody coming out. Uh, good to see Chairman Minks back.
Yes, sir.
Me and under the weather. Uh, also, the two ad hoc committees, thank you for your work that you did and your willingness to serve. But, uh, like I said, thank you guys for coming out. That's all.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yeah, just to echo some of the fellow commissioners, thank you to all the fire and rescue agencies, uh, the public, uh, safety staff as well. You guys do a remarkable job. We can't thank you enough. Uh, call volume continues to increase, uh, every, every week. Uh, diversions are staying on an all-time high, so you're spending a lot of times away from your family, a lot of long hours, whether you're doing it for volunteer or paid. And so we do appreciate you. And we're trying our best here at this body to, uh, make sure you're taken care of. Uh, again, what I said earlier, and again, I hope I didn't make anyone upset, I do encourage people to get out and be active with the association, with the commission, with the Board of Supervisors. You have an opportunity to come and speak, um, make that known. You know, call these guys. That's why they're here to serve for you. Call those board members. That's why they're elected. Again, it may not always happen in the way you want it to, but at least you'll know that you got to speak your agency's, uh, concerns. I want to thank the, uh, uh, commission here. You guys are doing a great job. It's, it's nice to come in here and not feel a whole lot of tension or animosity in this room. That's something I've, think in the past, we've kind of had to deal with, and I appreciate now. It feels like we can come and actually sit down and, uh, get business taken care of, and that means a lot. Because, uh, at the end of the day, we're not here for ourselves. We're here to protect the citizens of this county. And, um, so we do appreciate you guys for doing that. Uh, one thing I wanted to bring up, I think the association's already sort of working on this, and maybe a topic here later on. We need to be real careful with our call signs on our trucks. Um, I think going forward, if it's an advanced EMT or a lower truck, it needs to be being marked up rescue, and I'll use, in, in my opinion here, for my agency, rescue, you know, two-two-two. If it's a medic level, which means intermediate or higher truck, it needs to be marked medic two-two-two. And that's the same thing for the county trucks. I know sometimes, majority of the time, they have medic staffing, but sometimes they have shortages, just like all of us. But it does kind of confuse people, and if you hear medic one or medic two-two-two or whatever, it gets confusing. And right now, we're not all on the same lingo. But I know the association's already got a communications committee that's working on some things, and so hopefully that'll get, uh, fixed in the near future. Uh, I am sorry I missed last month. I had the COVID, and I got bit by a tick, so I had that alpha, I got that alpha gal now, so I am struggling, because I like steak, but it is what it is. Um, with nothing else being said, though, that's all I've got. Thank you, guys, and we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Thank you, guys.